Morning, everyone. Welcome. Glad to have you here to join in your county government participation and a lot of things that are going on in our county at this time. This time I'll call the Board of Commissioners meeting for March the 28th to order and ask the Marshal Ron if you bring the list forward. If you have your phone on, please silence it. And I don't see any elected officials. You're not elected, are you, Ron? And if you'll, well, if you'll join with me, we'll begin with an invocation and a pledge. Heavenly Father God, we just paused to turn this meeting over to you and to recognize that your ways are higher than our ways, your thoughts are higher than our thoughts, and we just lift up this time and seek your guidance and your wisdom. Lord, I just got a heavy heart this morning. Growing up there, a mile away from the school church where the three children were killed a couple of days ago and the three adults, and we just lift those families up to you. Just the pain has got to be immeasurable, and somehow in this country, we've got to turn back to you and avoid all these just unbelievable killings. So I just give that to you this morning and thank you that we have law enforcement here in the county and that they protect us, guide us, and direct us in public safety. Pray these things in Jesus' name, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. The March 14th, 2023 work session minutes and the March 14th, 2023 board meeting minutes are available for review. Our team Paulding segment today is about our water line expansion, and I guess we've got a video to go along with that.
We're here today on the 120 Buchanan Highway Water Rain Project. The county was able to install 7,100 feet.
There were 33 homeowners that signed up for the water, and the line that was put down will serve any new customers that move into the area. The water going in out Buchanan Highway will be coming from our new Richland Creek reservoir, so that's part of our water project to getting Richland Creek reservoir water around the county.
By turning the hydrant on and flowing water, it will be the official kickoff for this water line to be fully in service.
Pretty neat, Sandy.
It is. Water to West Paulding County.
From the reservoir.
From our own reservoir.
Right. Well, next, under announcements, you don't have anything to go along with this one either, do you, Jeff?
No, we just have some documents we're going to put on the, from the laptop here.
Okay. Well, the Board of Commissioners would like to present the Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month proclamation to Ms. Ivy Capps. Ms. Capps, if you would, join us up front. Ms. Capps is the Executive Director of the Paulding Child Advocacy Center, and we have a proclamation that we're going to read collectively. So we'll, we'll read the proclamation, and then if you have some words you want to share with us, that'd be great. Paulding County Board of Commissioners, Dallas, Georgia. Whereas, well, we're going to start with post one, and they're going to do the first whereas.
Whereas, children are the embodiment of innocence and hope for the future. Every child deserves to grow up in a safe nurturing environment, free from harm and fear. Sadly, child abuse is a reality and a problem we must relentlessly combat through awareness and action.
Keep going.
Whereas, every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many, and that protecting our children is one of our highest priorities. It is vital that we all do our part to ensure that our youth are safe and given the opportunity to have happy childhoods.
Whereas, there are no excuses for the, for child abuse or neglect, but there are many consequences, some which may last a lifetime. Therefore, it is critical that children's advocacy groups, community organizations, government resources, and others come together to form a network of support that can reach out to those in need. When abuse or neglect does occur, individual citizens have a duty to report it to the appropriate authorities.
Whereas, this month, we asked the citizens of Paulding County to join in with Paulding Child Advocacy Center to fight child abuse. By raising awareness of this issue and standing up for the safety of our children, we can help prevent child abuse and allow our young ones to look forward to bright futures.
Therefore, it resolved that I, David L. Carmichael, Chairman of the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April, April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Paulding County and encourage the citizens to show that they care by committing themselves to fighting child abuse and neglect. So we've signed this proclamation, and after you say a few words, please come and grab it.
Okay, thank you so much. Y'all did very well, and I like the blue up there. That's, that's nice. Actually, Friday is the first Friday of this campaign for April. They're actually starting it at Friday, to wear blue every Friday of the month, just to kind of have an awareness of Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. We, I want to give you a little fun, and you have to look at it as a fourth grader, through the eyes of a fourth grader. We do a pinwheel contest, and we allow them to color and do a positive message, you know, so that it's positive instead of what would you say to a kid if you knew something, you know, was going on or whatever? And so the top of the page says, "Prevent Child Abuse," and this kid said, "Don't beat your kid ever." You know, and I was like, okay, very good. That was his, his or her message to, to the, to his class for the fourth grade pinwheel. We'll be having those up on our website and hopefully working with the school board to be able to pick a district winner. We pick first, second, and third from every school, and then we pick an overall district winner and hopefully get them to present that to them at the, at the school board meeting. Each kid gets a medal, first place, second, with a, on the back of it, it says, "Take a Stand Against Child Abuse," and the date, and then they get their artwork framed and given back to them. So the kids really love it. They pay a big deal about it. We do an assembly and, you know, we, you know, make a big deal out of it and make it fun. I want to say thank you for allowing us to be a part of this and you being a part of our proclamation and showing awareness in the county. That means a lot to us and to the kids of our county. I have a couple of things I wanted to share. Okay, there it is. I have given you two flyers up there. One of them is about our walk, and we still are taking registration for walkers. The sponsorship part is now passed. T-shirts have been ordered. We're making it more of a walk slash fest this year. We're having bouncy houses, face painting, and then we'll have the end of the evening, we'll have a walk, and it's really neat to see if you can join us. It's April 15th. Pay your taxes, come have fun. Or not, whatever. You know, those commercials, you know, let somebody else pay your, do your taxes, and then you don't have to do them. So anyway, do your taxes, pay your taxes, and come and have fun. We'll have food trucks, and, but when you walk around Veterans Park, we have silhouettes of every child, and the names are Jane Doe, of course, and John Doe, but the ages are correct. And this past year, we served 233 children in this county. And when you walk that, that park and you see all of those silhouettes, it's empowering from the ages of three to the ages of, I think our oldest is 22. They were a special needs adult, and Paulding asked us to interview the, interview the person instead of them. And it, this year, we're going to place a light at each, a little tea light at each silhouette, so that it kind of, you are connected to that child in thinking about it. Because these kids were brave enough to be able to come forth and say whatever it is they needed to say. They've, they've spoken with an interview that they've never met before, and they've told their deepest darkest to this perfect stranger. Disclosure is a, is a process, so a lot of times, there's a lot more that comes out afterwards, but just that initial glad that we are here in our county, because we used to have to drive to Rome. We were, Rome covered, Floyd County covered us, and then we built the satellite here in 2004. Thank you for all, the community built that building and gave, gave the land. And so then our families didn't have to travel, but that's all they got was an interview. No follow-up services, no advocacy or anything like that, no therapy from, from the CAC. So in 2017, we would become independent, and now we have our fully serviced CAC, and we provide, we provide that trauma-focused therapy for afterwards, and the advocacy calls and the resources and just listening. Yesterday, I was going downstairs to get bows, and there was a mother down there, and she was waiting on her child in therapy, and she's like, "Have you got a minute?" Yes. You know, I put the bows down, and I sat and I listened to her for an hour. You know, she just needed to be heard, and that's why we're there. And I feel honored that we are here, that we can provide that service. I'm sad that, you know, in our world, we have to have it, but if we do, then I'm glad that I'm a part of it, and I've been a part of the CAC world since 2000. I got out of it for about a year, year and a half. I got right back in it. It's in your blood. It was, it's my calling. It's what I do. I do want to give you just a little bit of history about the blue ribbon. Late eighties, this grandmother from Virginia, unfortunately, her grandson had died at the hands of abuse, physical abuse, and she saw all the bruises, and she could never do anything about it. And, but then on a more positive note, she wanted to educate others, and so in 1989, this grandmother started tying a blue ribbon to her antenna, you know, when you have the real antennas, not these science fiction-looking things on your car. I have to say that because my intern, my interns don't know what an antenna is. So they're like, "How did you tie it?" I'm like, mm. So, and to help educate, and that the hope of tomorrow and the promise, because there are people out here that will help you and listen to you, and that movement started. The first child advocacy started was Huntsville, Alabama, in 1985 by Bud Kramer. He was the former, he was the district attorney at that time, and he said, "We have to do better. Our children are speaking to 14, 15, 20 people before we even get to court," and a defense attorney could say, "Well, your kid's not consistent." Well, think about if you've gone the most amazing vacation ever, you had the blast, if it was Disney World and you were a kid, it was the blast. You came home and you were telling everything about using all of your senses. It was just amazing, 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 amazing. Then you see somebody that you haven't seen in a couple of months. "I heard you went on vacation. Tell me about your vacation." You're hitting the highlights by then, because you're back to the real world now. It's not fun anymore. You're not going to have a magical day like you do at Disney World. So think about somebody that's having to talk about things that are not so happy, and they're having to tell it and tell it and tell it. So that's why CACs were formed, to be able to have the team come and watch a forensic interview, talk to a kid one-on-one, and everybody gets the same statement, and it's not just this in-depth interviewing of, of different people. So I'm glad that we, we are here. We are planning to stay here. We hopefully, one day, our tenure plan is maybe to even add on. I was informed of that in a board meeting the other day. I'm like, oh, okay, all right, let's, we'll work on that. So, but that's a long-range plan and to provide better and more services to our families here in Paulding County. And we also do courtesies for out-of-state. We did one for, that happened in Jamaica, and everybody was wanting to be the interviewer on that, because you know, you may have to travel to Jamaica to testify, but I wasn't the lucky one. I didn't draw the right straw, I guess, so. But we do do courtesies, and we work very closely with the counties around us. Douglas County was out of a therapist. We picked up their load for a little while, and so we just kind of work back and forth with each other, because we're all the smaller community child advocacy centers. And then you've got the larger ones that are down in. There's two big, large ones that's in Fulton, getting to Cap County. But we say we're tiny but mighty, and, you know, we can stand up with the big one, you know, the larger ones as well. Again, I appreciate all of you and allowing us to come in and do this, and I wanted to show one other, this, if, the Blue Ribbon, Paint Paulding Blue Campaign, that's what our blue ribbons look like this year. Put them on your doe, your doors and all, and I'm going to leave, I've left both of these in the back for those in the, in the viewing area. We do have QR codes on each of those, and we are starting to deliver bows today, because first of next week, we'd like them all out. Stacy Hamby at the Chamber, she's over, she likes to be an overachiever. She put hers up two weeks ago, and I'm like, okay, thank you, but, you know, April is the statement, you know? So you will also see pinwheels going around the county. At the Board of Ed, we'll have them out at the hospital. They've already got their big sign up, and you need to stop and look at that. That sign is huge, but from the road, you can't read it all. But all of the logos on that are people in this county and all different levels that are helping to prevent and help fight child abuse. So it's not just our agency. We work along with everybody in this county, because it's, it's a team effort, and that's what we have, is we call it a multidisciplinary team, and it takes every one of us to be able to combat and help prevent. So if you see pinwheels, Dallas and Hiram are actually doing some this year, and the Sheriff's Office are going to be doing some. Out of fairness, because of court, we do have child abuse cases going. The judges have decided that they need to remain neutral, so you don't see any around in the, around the courthouse anymore, or bows in the courthouse anymore. I respect that. I mean, I don't want anything to, to taint our cases, so, but they are aware and they do help support us. So, any questions?
I think we can put that blue ribbon on Rebecca's hair for the rest of the day. But we appreciate the extra information, some of which I didn't know, and you may not be aware, but we are live streamed throughout the county, so a lot of other people will hear the words that you've said and be much better educated. So thanks, Ivy, for
Sure.
elaborating more on what you all do. Much appreciated.
Somebody sees a blue ribbon, and is like, "What's the blue ribbon?" You know, because if it's black, it's for funeral. If it's light blue or light pink, it's babies. This is, well, what's this for? You know, or for cancer, like, you know, the pink, so, you know, you can explain why, and it's just to, and it's one of our fundraisers. This and the walk is what we do in April for our fundraisers for the year, one, two of our bigger ones. The schools are really big into these. Teachers love to decorate their bulletin boards, and they are very competitive. So last year, we had had 100 bows tied. 300 came in from our schools, because all the teachers wanted bows, and we were like, "Oh, my gosh." So we were scrambling. This year, it's knocked down a little bit, but still, that's, you'll see a lot of them in the schools and in their classrooms, and just being able to, you know, a donation of $10, and it goes a long way.
We'd like to give you this proclamation, and perhaps we have time for a picture. Bid awards is going to be the Ms. Tabitha Pollard Show here. Item two on our agenda is to award the purchase of a scale computing hardware replacement to the lowest bidder, SHI, in the amount of $74,057.91. This item was budgeted through our general funds.
Good morning, and we do have quite a few items on the agenda today, but most of the, or all of these were actually budgeted, so they've gone through the budget process. We haven't purchased them. Some of them weren't necessarily due for replacement until later in the year, and so we're closing out some of those items. So all of these were budgeted items. This first one is the scale computing hardware replacement, so this replaces some of the servers, servers around the county that are out of warranty period, and it mainly houses our ERP system as well as some other processing systems that we use throughout the county. And we did receive three bids, and we're recommending, our IT is recommending award to the lowest bidder, SHI, in the amount of $74,057.91, and that is within the budgeted amount.
Any questions on item two? Bid award item three is to award the renewal of Nutanix Support Software to the lowest bidder, PC Solution and Integration, in the amount of $51,682.19.
This is another similar one, but this is targeted towards the public safety realm, so we, we purchased a public safety software system a couple of years ago, and this is the server for that, for that system, as they're also, well, actually, this one is a maintenance. This one's not a replacement for the server. This was actually maintenance on that server. And we did receive three bids. Sorry, I guess I should go into that, too. We've received three bids and recommending low bid, award to the lowest bidder, PCS, in the amount of $51,682.19.
Moving to item four is to award the vehicle purchase of five Explorers for Department of Transportation and one Explorer to the Water Department in the amount of $36,993 each to Hardy Family Ford. These purchases were included in the 2023 budget.
Vehicles have been pretty hard come by this year, and so we understand that there are a couple that are, have been delivered, or they're, they're, become available for purchase. And so Hardy has, again, they don't have the state contract, but in comparison with state contract, they're lowering the price from the state contract to be able to, to, to provide you those vehicles, and that allows Tim better service as far as warranty and other issues that he may need the dealership for.
And item five is to award the purchase of one F-150 Extended Cab 4x4 Vehicle in the amount of $38,940 and one F-150 Regular Cab in the amount of $36,900 for the Water Department, again, to Hardy Family Ford. These purchases were included in the fiscal year 2023 budget, the one we're in right now.
Same situation as the Explorers. These vehicles have been very hard to, for the dealers to get on the lot, especially from state contract pricing, and so these were, they have become available, and so our water system has requested to be able to make the purchase of these, both F-150s and Extended Cab and a Regular Cab. And Hardy's, again, compared with state contract, and they're, they've just come in barely under the state contract pricing.
Item five, that's the one I just read, sorry. Item six is to approve the purchase of a track excavator from Tractor and Equipment Company, TEC, in the amount of $271,906.21.
The Stormwater Department had a midsize excavator budgeted for purchase in the 2023 capital budget. The Stormwater Department is basically tasked with performing stormwater, maintenance, repairs, replacements in subdivisions in Paulding County. You know, the work inside subdivisions typically entails things like digging in drainage easements, replacing pipes, working on detention ponds, digging open drainage ditches, et cetera. A lot of times, this work occurs in very narrow areas. Typically, you have easements, I think, probably about 20 foot is probably the average easement. In theory, if you have deeper pipes, you have a wider easement, but, you know, 20-foot width is typically the area that we are tasked to perform our work on. So to do that work, essentially, you need a piece of equipment that is capable enough to be able to lift heavy pipes, but also has enough maneuverability to work in small spaces. So we had budgeted this midsize track excavator for this work, four different manufacturers, through four different dealers. We looked at price quotes and basically selected the Komatsu PC 238 as the best product for our needs at this time. It offers the largest swing radius, the highest front weight capacity, but also is one of the narrowest and lightest also. So essentially, this is the piece of equipment we would like to purchase and appreciate the board considering this purchase.
George, I noticed the lowest bid was actually Hyundai. What was the situation there?
We felt with the Komatsu, it had the extended warranty, so now we have a warranty that goes up to five years, 5,000 hours, and just the, the machine itself, again, it offers a little bit more of a capacity for picking up things, especially in front. The dimensions itself felt it was the best purchase for us. So it was not the cheapest. I believe it was the second lowest, but we've opted for this, and obviously, we discussed with Fleet Maintenance also before we presented this to you.
But it also has Komatsu Care, which they will service that machine for so long, which saves the county a bunch of money.
Yes, it does come with Komatsu Care, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll move on to number seven. Ms. Pollard and Mr. Wooton approved the purchase of the Gingersaw Rand RS 751 Air Compressor on quote number CTS 76795 in the amount of $56,204.22. Water renewal and extension funds will be used for this item. It's located in post four.
Yes, we have a Richland Creek River intake pump station that pulls in water from the Etowah River into our facility. We actually, out in the river, we have three screens that we regularly try to basically put a burst of air to clean off the screens to bring in clean water. Well, the existing compressor we have, with the additional running silt in the water and leaves in the water, we're finding that we need to run the compressor we have now more often. Well, the compressor we have now is not able to keep up, so we're, we got quotes for a 100 horsepower compressor that will be able to blow off all three screens about every 40 minutes, so that we can bring in fresh water without dealing with the additional silt and leaves from the Etowah River with everything that's coming down the river. So we would like y'all to consider approving the purchase of a compressor to help us to keep those screens clean.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We don't have any reports from committees and departments this morning. No one signed up for participation on agenda items under the consent agenda. I need to read all these this morning. Item eight is to adopt job classification for Assistant Director of the Water System. Item nine is to adopt job classification for Deputy Director of the Department of Transportation. Number 10 is to adopt job classification for Construction Division Manager, and 11 is to adopt job classification for Department of Engineering Division Manager. 12 is to adopt job classification for Traffic Operations Manager. 13 is to adopt, adopt a job classification for Water Engineering Division Manager, and number 14 is to adopt a job classification for Civil Engineer. Item 15 is to appoint Brian Cochran as a post four appointee on the Cemetery Preservation Board to fill the unexpired term of Mike Pickett, ending December 31st, 2023. Lastly, item 16 is to adopt appendix to the Polton County Purchase Manual to meet state transit requirements. So would any of the commissioners like to move any of these consent agenda items to regular business? Hearing none, they'll stay where they are. No old business this morning, and under new business, item 17 is to discuss action to adopt Ordinance 23-05, amending Section 6-31.1 of the official Polton County Code to clarify that only one package distilled spirits application will be considered per operating location. Mr. Phillips is here to better explain that, thank you, Jason.
Commissioners, as part of the package store application process, which is currently open right now, after talking with the Marshals Bureau and Community Development, we became concerned of a possibility that we might get multiple applicants applying for the license from a single operating location. So envision you have one location, and then you have 10 corporate entities all using that same operating location as the basis for their package store application. We felt that in a circumstance like that, it would be unfair to allow that to occur, so as to provide a potential unfair advantage to everybody who happened to be applying from that particular location, either through a contingency sales contract or contingency lease. So we sought through this amendment to declare that the county will receive one application per operating location. The first one in from that particular operating location is the application that will be considered for that operating location, assuming they fit all other qualifications. And that is the basis, again, for the amendment, just to create, hopefully, more fairness in the process.
Thank you. That is the conclusion of regular business, public participation on non-agenda items, no one has signed up. Would any of the commissioners like to announce or recognize or celebrate or whatever?
I wanted to say, if I may, Mr. Chairman, many of you may be familiar with Warehouse of Hope over on Highway 92, and they have provided for our community clothing and food and all kinds of things for a number of years, and been a real ministry out there. And Mr. Craig Parson passed away yesterday, who was the founder, basically, of Warehouse of Hope. So I don't know if you guys knew that or not, but anyway, just wanted to honor their work, and maybe some folks might wanna consider a donation to Warehouse of Hope at this time.
Do you know any arrangements yet? Yeah, they've done so much work around Polton County for 20 years. Brian, you have anything? You want anyone? I'd like to just shout out to HR and the staff. And when you see seven job classifications that need to be advertised and described, and also the county manager for, for that work, that's, you know, some of the issues, the concerns that the board had last meeting have already been addressed, and that's gonna go a long way to, to help in our staff. Let's see, executive session, land acquisition, so someone could make that motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session for litigation? Land, land acqui, acquisition.
I'll second that.
You got a motion in a second, all who are in favor, say aye. Just a reminder that we will adjourn from, from that executive session and not be back in this conference room, so this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I believe the motion's, we're not going to executive session, we'll adjourn if we're there.
Okay, well, adjourn to executive session.